Smithtown Planning Board is now in session. Would you join us for the Fledge of Allegiance?
States of America, unto the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you, and I wish everybody a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part two, item three, number 1114, Spirit Estates. Part three, item four, number 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item five, number 2010-02, King Cullen Grocery. Item six, number 2007-01, Gyrodine Company of America. Item seven, number 2007-04, Society of St. Johnlin. Item eight, number 2009-05, FB4 Realty. Part four, item 10, number 1053A, Burgess Estates. Item 11, number 911A, Glen Hill Northern. Part five, item 12, number TC10-01, T-Mobile Northeast. And that's it. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? Hearing none, emotion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Item one, number 1136, Hummingbird Estates. Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I just want to mention that in the subject matter of the memorandum, it does state that the property is approximately 480 feet west of 50-acre road. That is not the correct number. I believe it's more like 1,300 feet. About 3,000 feet, I'm sorry. Apparently, it was measured incorrectly when it was scaled from the map. The applicant is requesting to subdivide 6.152 acres into three single-family lots. The property is located within both the village of Nissiquag and the town of Smithtown. Approval from the planning boards of both municipalities is required before this map can be approved. The preliminary map of Hummingbird Estates, number 1136, is comprised of a single lot, which is irregularly shaped and owned by the applicant. The property contains a horse stable that will be removed to construct three proposed homes. The property has road frontage on a private road known as Brangle-Brink Road. Another proposed subdivision south of this property, known as Map of Tahami Platt, case number 1135, has road frontage on the south side of Brangle-Brink Road and will be presented to the board at a subsequent meeting. The property is located at the municipal boundaries for the town of Smithtown, the Incorporated Village of Nissiquag, and the Incorporated Village of the Head of the Harbor. More than 50 percent of the property is located within the village of Nissiquag. The portion of the property located within the Smithtown boundary is owned R43, single-family residential, 43,560 square feet, while the property located in the village is owned R2, two-acre minimum lot size. Although all of the proposed lots meet the town of Smithtown lot area requirement for the R43 zoning district, part of Lot Number One lies within the village of Nissiquag's boundaries and does not meet the two-acre requirement for the village. Should the board grant preliminary approval of this subdivision, the applicant will also need approval from the planning board of the village. The applicant will also need a rear yard setback variance for Lot Number One from the 100-foot minimum requirement to 79 feet if the applicant wants the house in its mapped location. The planning board may grant this variance per Section 322-30.4 of the Town Code. As previously mentioned, the property has road frontage on a private road known as Brangle-Brink Road. This private road runs through the village of Nissiquag, Smithtown, and Head of the Harbor. Only a small portion, approximately 500 feet, of the road is located in Smithtown. While the portions of the road located in the villages are private, the town owns the Smithtown portion, making that section of the road a public right-of-way. The county took ownership of this portion of the private road due to non-payment of property taxes. The town subsequently purchased this portion of the road from Suffolk County earlier this year. As part of any conditional approval, the applicant of this subdivision and the applicant of the proposed subdivision, Map of Tahami Platt, number 1135, on the south side of Brangle-Brink Road, would be required to reimburse the town for the acquisition costs, approximately $1,000, and to enter into an agreement with the town regarding maintenance and repair of the road. The agreement would require both applicants to maintain and repair the road as if that section were a private road. Currently, the villages of Nissiquag and Head of the Harbor maintain and repair the portions of Brangle-Brink within their boundaries, as well as the Smithtown portion. Another alternative would be to require the applicants to enter into an agreement with the municipality that performs the maintenance and repair of the section of road in question and reimburse them for actual expenses related to maintenance and repair of the road. The town attorney is currently drafting the agreement in cooperation with council for Hummingbird and Tahami. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments recommend approval. The following resolution is recommended for Hummingbird Estates, number 1136, from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be it resolved that the planning board of the town of Smithtown hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE. And be it resolved that the planning board of the town of Smithtown does hereby issue a SECRE negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, and EIS is not necessary, in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Hummingbird Holdings LLC for Hummingbird Estates, number 1136, for the following reasons. A) The proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or the Smithtown Town Code. B) The parcel does not appear to contain any high groundwater conditions, poor soil properties, or unmanageable slopes, which would impose severe environmental development constraints upon the subject proposal. C) The nature of the proposal mitigates against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. And D) The proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. The Planning Department recommends the approval of this preliminary map and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the preliminary map of Hummingbird Estates, number 1136, subject to the following conditions. A) The final submission shall include all requirements of Section 248-15 and 248-16 of the subdivision regulations. B) The applicant shall submit with the final map a complete traffic assigned detail plan and street lighting plan in accordance with Section 248-16F of the subdivision regulations. C) The applicant, along with the applicant of the Map of Tahami Platt, number 1135, shall execute an agreement approved by the town regarding the maintenance and repair of Brangle-Brink Road prior to final approval of either map, and the town shall be reimbursed for all costs acquiring Brangle-Brink Road from the County of Suffolk as determined by the town attorney. And be it further resolved that this preliminary plat approval shall be valid for a six-month period to end July 5, 2011. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for the Map of Hummingbird Estates, number 1136.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Anthony Guardino. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Farrell Fritz in Uniondale, New York. I represent the applicant, Hummingbird Holdings LLC. If I can briefly go over just a couple of items, I don't want to repeat what Mr. DiNatio has just said, particularly since we like what we heard. So, at first, though, I just want to introduce this affidavit of posting. Oh, it comes off? Okay, great, thank you. The subject property, as was pointed out, is 6.15 acres. It is a three-lot subdivision on Brangle-Brink Road. It's on the north side of the road. The parcel is, in fact, bisected almost in half by the municipal boundary between the village of Nissiquag and the town of Smithtown. About 3.4 acres are located in the town, 2.71 acres located in the village. The town portion is owned R43, one-acre zoning for single-family residences; in the village, zoned R2, which requires two-acre minimum lot area for single-family residences. The two lots are located primarily in the town, and one lot is located primarily in the village. I do want to point out that the proposed lots comply with all of the applicable lot area requirements and other dimensional zoning requirements of the primary jurisdiction that they are located. No variances are going to be necessary. I know Mr. DiNatio had mentioned that, based on a prior plan that we had submitted, it showed a, on the lots, it was basically a fictitious footprint. My client is not going to be building the houses himself, we don't believe, and so they were just showing houses there just for illustration purposes. And in fact, one of the houses that was shown would have required a rear setback variance in its shown configuration. What we subsequently did is we amended the plan to take those buildings off and just show a building envelope. And as you can see from the revised plan that was submitted, that I believe you have before you, the building envelopes are fully compliant with the applicable zoning regulations of either the village or the town. So, our plan is not to ask for any variances. So, that's what we're proposing. By way of a little bit of history, and I just think it's important that the board know this, the applicant had originally proposed, in an original application, a four-lot subdivision for this property with a cul-de-sac, and three of the lots would have been located in Smithtown, and the three lots that would have been in Smithtown would have met the minimum lot area requirements. The proposal, after it was submitted, was met with some resistance by neighbors to the south and to the east and by the village of Head of the Harbor, who were opposed to the creation of the cul-de-sac, and they argued that the lots should be larger because, essentially, what you have is, you can see the picture here, you have a small triangle that sort of juts in between the two villages, Head of the Harbor here and the village of Nissiquag, and their point was that everything located on the north side of Brangle-Brink should, you know, should be consistent-looking, the character of the area should be consistent, which would require larger lots. So, my client, you know, heard what was said and basically acquiesced to a reduced lot yield. So, we went from four to three, and that appeared to have satisfied the neighbors, it appeared to have satisfied the village of Head of the Harbor, and we eliminated the road. So, there was no need to the road. So, what you have before you is the result of discussions between neighbors, the applicant, and an adjoining village. We will have to go to the village of Nissiquag in order to get this plat approved because of the fact that it's partially located in that village. I would like the board to know that we have been to the village before on several occasions. They know that this is coming. Basically, what they told us to do is because it was primarily located in the town of Smithtown and because there were more lots in the town of Smithtown, they said, "Go to Smithtown first, go to the planning board, get your approval, and then come back to the village," and that's what we're going to be doing, hopefully, if this is approved. And then finally, on the road maintenance issue, we were advised through the process about this Suffolk County acquisition of this short portion of Brangle-Brink. It's essentially just a portion here that's, you know, Department of Town, Smithtown goes from where the line is bisected, bisecting the lot to here. Excuse me, I'm sorry. So, when we learned that we had to address this issue and the town was acquiring the property, my client agreed to participate in that agreement. We did speak with council for the subdivision that's going to be located on the south side of Brangle-Brink, and we have reached an agreement whereby the respective lot owners of the parcels, both north and south of this portion of Brangle-Brink, will be responsible, you know, financially for the road maintenance of that portion of the road. And we're at the point now where we're just working out the details with Mr. Calendrino from the town attorney's office, just to figure out how we're going to do that exactly. But we're all in agreement, and there are no issues there, as far as we can tell, clearly not with my client, and I don't believe with council for the other subdivision. And that's basically it. I thank you.
You don't have any problem with the recommendations there for the planning director on this application?
No, that's fine.
Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman? If I may just clarify a point, in the resolution, it notes that an agreement has to be reached before final approval of either map. When the board approves something that's considered conditional final approval, a final approval actually means the filing of the map. So, I just want to make that distinction. So, when we bring up the next subdivision, we're going to ask for conditional final approval, the next subdivision. So, it's not until the map is filed that we have to have the agreement in place, and before the chairman signs the map.
And that's fine, absolutely not a problem. There is one other issue that I just want to bring up, just to bring to the board's attention. On this map, if you look at it, there are two stables, one located here and one located slightly larger, located to the north. These are existing horse stables that are on the property. They are noted on the plan to be removed, and in all likelihood, they will be removed. What we would like to do is we would ask the board if they can remain on the property until such time as somebody comes in for a building permit to build a house on these lots. And the reasoning is that they happen to be nice structures, but more importantly, when my client sells these parcels, it's possible, the way they lay it out now where this lot line is, these would be non-conforming, they don't comply with the zoning. But if somebody came in and bought both parcels and merged the lots, then the location of these buildings would be acceptable. So, we'd hate to have to just take them down if, in fact, they might have some value to a prospective purchaser. Clearly, if the person does not merge the lots and wants to come in and buy one lot, you know, they'd either have to take it down, or they'd have to go to the zoning board and see if they could get a variance. And if they got the variance, I guess they could keep it. If they couldn't, it would absolutely have to come down. So, what we're asking is that the board allow us, at this point, to at least just keep these buildings here until such time as an application for a building permit, and then it has to be addressed one way or another at that point.
Frank, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I think we could probably come up with a solution to that. The applicant wasn't one who proposed to remove them, so we just noted on the map, but given the fact of, this is, we're talking almost two-acre densities up in this particular area, so we're not talking about overcrowding of the land here, so we could probably come up with some viable solution between now and the final. I think that the board would feel comfortable with, so...
Is it in short, is it in...
Yeah, I think the properties are well oversized for even one-acre zoning, and I think, given the two-acre almost density, because this is property six acres in size, we can allow a degree of flexibility in how we deal with this. It wouldn't have the same impact, let's say, if you were at half-acre zoning or something of that nature.
That would be great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Members of the board, any questions? Motion there for the SECRE negative.
In the matter of Hummingbird Estates, number 1136, motion to approve the SECRE negative declaration.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. On the preliminary map.
In the matter of Hummingbird Estates, number 1136, motion to adopt the resolution as read, subject to the conditions recommended by the planning department.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, under part one, item two, number 1110, Tartamella and De Benedettis. The applicant is, pardon me one moment, Mr. Chairman. Preliminary approval? Okay. Just wanted to be sure. My apologies. The applicant is requesting preliminary approval to subdivide 1.66 acres into three single-family residential lots on property with steep slopes. In order to construct this subdivision, a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to disturb environmentally sensitive lands is required. Before the BZA can act, it is required by Section 277-6 of town law to consider the planning board's comments to the BZA. The subject property is located along Smithtown Boulevard and is split-zoned. The first 200 feet is zoned neighborhood business, and the remaining property is zoned residential R10, 10,000 square feet, minimum lot size. The property is heavily wooded. Most of the property fronting along Smithtown Boulevard contains steep slopes, rising from a 76-foot elevation along the street to 104 feet where the homes are proposed. In order to construct access to the homes, a significant amount of regrading and construction of retaining walls would be necessary. A primary objective in reviewing this subdivision was to keep the disturbance to a minimum. Toward this end, the applicant submitted several revisions to the staff. The current plans call for a single wide-access driveway for lots one and two, and another driveway for lot three to be located along the southern portion of the lot. Both driveways are steep, having slopes of 10% and 8.3%, respectively. The town's standard is to have driveway slopes of less than 8%. After reviewing several proposals, the staff believes that the current proposal will result in a minimum of disturbance. Although the driveway slopes are high, there is no practical way they could be reduced given the topography of the property. The Planning Department recommends approval of this design. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby makes a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals to permit altering environmentally sensitive land with slopes in excess of 15% and to permit a structure within 10 feet of any slope greater than 15%. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for Tartamella and De Benedettis, number 1110.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Trumarkle. I represent the applicant. I've heard the recommendation of the planning department, and hope that the board will recommend favorably to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience to be heard on this application? Members of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in regards to Tartamella and De Benedettis, number 1110, in regard to accepting the resolution offered by the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to part six of the agenda. Mr. Chairman, before I read the memorandum, I just want to bring to the board's attention that in the opening paragraph, it mentions that the applicant is making a request for an extension for a period of nine months to expire on September 25, 2010. That is incorrect. The correct request would be for a period of two years, and the expiration date would be September 25 of 2012. That information is actually correct in the resolution that I will read later on in the memo. The applicant requests to extend the performance bond for a period of two years to expire on September 25, 2012, in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this four-lot subdivision from the planning board on November 15, 2006. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $111,440 was approved by the board and subsequently signed by the chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the town board accepted a passbook in lieu of a performance bond on September 5, 2008. Planning board approval for this performance bond expired on September 25, 2010. The engineering department contacted the applicant by letter dated August 24, informing them the bond would expire and that they should contact the planning department to make the appropriate application to the board. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on August 30 to the planning department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. Planning has performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision and has determined that construction has not begun. Additionally, none of the required public improvements have been completed. Therefore, the planning department does not object to the applicant's request. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Mill Run Estates, number 1062, for a period of two years to expire on September 25, 2012. Mr. Chairman, this is the planning department's recommendation for Mill Run Estates, number 1062.
Anyone here representing the applicant? Would you give your name and address, please?
James Fuller, 10 Winmar Way, Centerreach, New York. I have the affidavit of posting and the pictures.
Affidavit of posting. Any problems with the way this has been presented?
No.
Okay. Any members of the community want to comment on this application? Hearing none?
Thanks, I have a question.
Question there by the board?
Mr. Fuller, the construction has begun there, though, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, because I was by there the other day, and one of the houses has started, it looks like it was framed.
That's correct, yeah.
Just want to put that into the record.
Foundation went in and it was framed?
Yes, well, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, it's being framed right now. The only thing that's not finished with the road is the last lift. The streetlights are in, the utilities are in, the fire hydrant is in.
There's definitely at least one house framed there.
All the septic, you know, all the drainage is in. The only thing they have to do is put the top coat on the road and put the signs up.
All right, well, make a note of that.
It's even a better deal now, right? $112,000 just for the signs and the top coat.
It shouldn't really change the application, but how we're going to act on it, but I mean, it should be noted in the record that the construction has begun there, I think.
Any questions, Frank?
No.
All right, members of the board, anything? Motion.
In the matter of Mill Run Estates, number 1062, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
We thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, under part seven, item 14, number 1086, Nottingham Acres. Mr. Chairman, we just want to note for the record that the location of this preliminary proposal is north of Smithtown Boulevard, which has a considerable amount of road frontage on Lake Avenue, and it is a 22-acre site, which is one of the largest preliminary subdivisions in town right now. The applicant is requesting a six-month extension of the conditional preliminary approval in order to obtain more time to comply with the requirements of filing for final approval. The preliminary map of Nottingham Acres, case number 1086, received approval on June 15, 2005. This is the 10th request for extending preliminary approval. While the planning department has no objections to this request, we believe that the board should consider a limit to the number of approvals. In light of the current economic conditions, we would recommend that the board consider only one more extension after this approval. In that, if the applicant has not filed a final subdivision by December 15, 2011, the board would not approve any further extensions. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants an extension of time to the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as Map of Nottingham Acres, number 1086, to end on June 15, 2011, with the condition that the board will entertain only one more request for an extension of preliminary approval. Mr. Chairman, this is the planning department's recommendation for Nottingham Acres, number
Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Elmer Hornberger, 100 Route 347, Escondre, President of Storybook Homes. We've heard the recommendations from the board, and we accept it, and the affidavit of posting was delivered to the planning board this afternoon.
Is there any reason why we would have to give a further extension if we didn't limit ourselves from doing it now?
It's entirely within the board's discretion at this point.
Is there any reason why we would need to limit ourselves? I mean, I understand it's been on a lot of times, obviously, it's been a lot of extensions, and we may not be inclined to grant it again if it came up again. But is there any reason why we have to limit ourselves or preclude ourselves from doing that? Because when it comes up, we may want to, and we may not be inclined to, but we don't know what's going to happen in this matter of time.
Well, it's a policy question by the board, you know, and what we're basically saying is that there should be a limit to the number of times you grant reapprovals.
There's no limit in the law, is there?
No, there isn't.
There's no limit in the town code?
No, there isn't.
This is only a recommendation that you've made.
That's correct.
Do you see any reason why we want to put our hands? Do you think we just want to leave it open, and if we aren't inclined to grant it, we'll deal with it at that time? Or do you want to limit ourselves now?
I think that we can live with the recommendation that we have now. Okay. Any other objections?
You agree that this is the last time it's going to be on for an extension?
There are a lot more.
No, we would have to, we would have to come back on June 15.
This is a preliminary. And what we're saying is, is that they could submit a final application, you know, at any time, and that stays whatever this application. But we haven't received anything from a final application standpoint. Part of, part of this is, is when you have an application this length of time, it begins to look like, you know, when you look at it on paper, nobody understands that, you know, the applicant has requested this many extensions, it looks like the government's been reviewing this thing for six years.
We know that's not the case.
Yes.
This has been posted, though, right?
Yes, it is.
Any questions by the members in the audience? Members of the board?
Could I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I mean, if, for some unforeseen reason, I mean, we're working with the health department now, with the covenants, and we've done the test holes, and we expect that we'll move along, but if something comes up, you know, with some weather or something like that, I mean, to cut us off, and we could have, at December 15, I mean, if you could say that as long as we are proceeding in the right direction, and if we had to come for another extension beyond that...
Well, let me just clear up, how many applications have been made so far for extensions?
Nine.
Nine. Nine extensions there. Haven't been able to resolve there what's going on in nine extensions?
Well, I mean, we had, we were held up because we were trying to redesign something in there, which we finally, we finally worked that out with the, with the planning director. And we hope that everything will proceed to, you know, and work it out that by December 15, everything would work out. We wouldn't want to put all that time in, and all of a sudden, we saw what we needed, another month or so, and it would be, you know, it's...
Frank, if we, if we passed the resolution as you currently read it, and then he got his additional extension, and some unforeseen circumstances came up that he felt he needed additional time, wouldn't we have power as the board to amend our own resolution or pass a new resolution to give him that time?
Yes.
So we could, you could deal with it at that time?
Yes, you can.
All right, so that's fine.
That we could deal with at that time when it comes to the...
Because we say we cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yes.
Okay. We accept that. Thank you, thank you, members.
I'm not saying we're going to be inclined to grant it, but we'll keep it as it is.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. Any other questions by the board? A motion?
In the matter of Nottingham Acres, number 1086, motion to adopt the resolution as read, subject to the conditions recommended by the planning department.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, under part seven, item 15, 288 application of Bayview Development Corp. The applicant is requesting an extension of the conditional approval granted by the board on June 18, 2008. The applicant is requesting more time in order to comply with the conditions placed on this application by the board. The planning department has no objection to this request and recommends approval. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants a retroactive extension of time to the conditional approval for the 288 application of Bayview Development Corp. and Quality Realty Corp., Suffolk County Tax Map Numbers 167-4-8 and 9, to expire on June 19, 2011. Mr. Chairman, this is the planning department's recommendation for the 288 application of Bayview Development Corp. and Quality Realty Corp.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add one point on this for the board's notification. The applicant did comply and submitted all the paperwork prior to the holidays, and a recommendation to accept the performance bond was submitted to the town board. For reasons unknown, the paperwork was transferred electronically on a new system, but for some reason or another, got stalled at one of the steps and never made it onto a town board meeting. We did not discover that till the day of the meeting. So the applicant was, had to, was forced to apply for this extension, but for the record, it was our fault, meaning the town's fault, why the paperwork wasn't accepted.
Frank, this is the same issue we had before the board about, I guess, two months ago?
Anybody here representing the applicant? Would you give your name and address, please?
Douglas Baumgarth, 39 Doris Avenue, Northport. B-A-U-M-G-A-R-T-H, and I'm the president for Quality Realty and Bayview Development.
Anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard on this? Members of the board? Any questions? If none, a motion.
In the matter of item number 15 on the agenda, 288 application, Bayview Development Corp., I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody here, anybody else here? I see some other people in here, anybody else here has anything? No? All right, we have some housekeeping. And first of all, I would like to welcome the new members to the board that have been appointed to the board. And I also would like to reappoint as counsel to the board, Mr. Shul. And my second recommendation is for the vice chairman of the committee is Mr. Ahar. Any questions? Hearing none?
I'd like to make a motion on that.
You'd like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion.
Unanimous?
Why don't we just make it unanimous?
Well, you can't be, you're one short.
All those in favor?
Forward one abstent.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Right, and she's going to say one for Adam also.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on the agenda is the adoption of minutes for the September 1st and November 3, 2010, planning board meetings.
Motion to adopt the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the minutes as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
One last item in your correspondence, you will find a letter from...
Yeah, I see it.
The owner of Nest Manor, I'm just, without comments, giving this to the board. The matter that he is asking, some of it's illegal, some of it is legal to ask for. I will respond to him to make, if he feels he wants to make an application for this, make an application before the board. None of these matters. I'll advise him. You know, he could put his request in, but you have to proceed according to what the law states.
Have you advised him of that?
No, we are going to advise him of that. That was just dropped off to us, so we put it at the last minute.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.